YouTube, I actually use that one now. Well, because not for email, but only from a Google Calendar, because it will arrive on my phone. I'm like, yeah, because before I type it in and then I'm like, where is the link? You know, so I try to send it from Outlook. So now I'm like, oh, that's perfect. It's doing what I want. So now I can use, you know, change it, yeah.
Okay, well, it is. So I will call. This.
Oh, wait.
Okay. So the first item on our agenda is preschool education. And Nancy and W G have come to talk to us about.
Didn't bring.
And we are sorry that Dan is sending joy us today.
Okay. We will fill him. Okay, sounds good. Um, I, yeah. I didn't, I just brought for the board, so. Um, not knowing who all was gonna be here. Um. What I have done is giving you a brief. I'll wait until everybody has it. I've given you a b- brief history of. The community childhood learning place. And I'd like to just pause for a moment there and just say. That title, uh, while it was hard fought to come up with it, really says it all. It's. It was built by the community for the community and it is dedicated to learning. It's not a childcare center. Uh, most childcare centers in the United States are mediocre to poor. We have worked hard. Some to net that we are a learning place. In fact, we just hired. A gal who's got great credentials, uh, for in our field. And she had multiple offers and he said she took us because we were. It was clear to her that we were a place that dealt in learning. And I think that's important to remember. Uh, we are, we're not just making sure they are all safe. We're just not wiping bottoms, which we do wipe bottoms, but we also do the more. Uh. The town approved this all in two thousand seventeen. For some of you, it's ancient history for those who are not aware. Uh, and at that point, we started work on the design and the building and earning and raising the money to build it. Um. Again, I can't tell you with enough every. In fact, our architect said that, who had lived in Castine, uh, Tim Moore and Sherman Todd. They said child childcare is an infrastructure of every community. And if you don't have it, you're not gonna go anywhere. And that's their words. And. And as a result, they gave us, uh, everything. All of their services were free. Uh, and not only that, I think they should be applauded. The, they wanted windows. I had a grant to buy the windows. I, uh. The different windows, which which of course were the windows that you see that were more expensive. I told them I couldn't. They said, give us a few days. They went to the company because they order million dollar contracts every year from them. They got, uh, they got our windows. They've got our doors and they contribute at reduced cost. And then they, on top of that, they gave us money to help pay for it. And they found an anonymous donor from the community that also. So the bottom line is, uh, it is important. What you have on that hill, and believe me, I have seen hot, uh, uh, I guess, I can decide it. But. Childcare centers all over the United States and in, uh, foreign countries. And I can tell you what you have. If where this community is an absolute gem. It does not exist. Maybe on a college campus, it exists because the college built it with college funds. But what you have is beautiful and, uh, and it's, it's a unique design. So at that point, um. We opened our doors in, uh, two thousand and, um, I'm sorry, twenty and, uh, of course. Got right away slapped in the face with a coast. And, uh. Reopened again and started in. And then at that point, we had a, um. A hostile takeover, an attempt and a hostile takeover, at which can, that set us back because of, um. Publicity that was put on Facebook, Instagram, uh, and out into the community. We have had a loyal staff that are dedicated and have surrounded all of those. I say contrary to whatever rumors have circulated in this town. That program has never not been approved by the state inspectors. So it's not whatever rumors are soaking are not true. Uh, I would like to just take another moment to explain to you how this works. Because that was sort of the problem with the hostile takeover. The bottom line is. This contains all the rules and regulations I must follow. If I don't follow them, then state will come in and close this down. It's all here, got them. You can see the ones that are moving with the tabs of the ones that seem to be difficult. You, we do have had staff people that say, oh, I don't have to obey these. Yes, you do. You have to obey it. Now. We have a board. The board is there because it's a five O one C three. It is not a requirement of the Department of Health and Human Services. If that's why we have the board and it operates as a five O one C three board in that they oversee that. Their oversee is just to make sure we. Obey the emission of the program and that we're financially solid. We have met all of those criterias. Again, all the rest rests with the license holder. Which is approved by the state. I am the license holder. End of story. So I, it is my job to make sure all these rules and regulations are followed. If they're not followed, then I'm the one that's at fault. Okay? Um, so, uh, present day, uh, we are. We are moving ahead, uh, in, uh. We have a good program. We have, we see over in this past year, we, we served approximately thirty seven children. Um, which I think is spectacular and for all the naysayers that said we couldn't fill it. We did. Uh, summer, of course, as this community is, we bring in. But we have children during the year that are there from Bucksport. Uh, Orland. Um, Knopscott. And Blue Hill. Those are city children. Comes, that now this year, we have a child from Turkey. Uh, which has just been absolutely wonderful. And we also then during the summer, we have children that come in from Arizona, South Carolina, North Carolina, Virginia. And are with us sometimes California. Two stars. And they may be that we have them for a week or we have them for the whole summer. Depending on how they come, are coming into the community. So, um, uh. We handle it very well and, uh, we do. Surprise, great job. I would like to say something as we move to this. This curriculum that we use, it's called an approach. It is not the standard curriculum. But we tie it to the main state early childhood learning standards. And they, those are assessed twice a year. The parents, we have parent teacher conferences. The parents are advised on whatever objectives from the state standards that they, uh. That the teacher selects that they wanna work on. Besides that, we also use what is called the project approach. And I can't, I have dealt with this for probably thirty some years and I can't tell you the re- how pleased I am with the results. When you have children who in the C program, the school age children there in the summer. They studied wind and in the process of the wind, they did all kinds of various scientific studies and that. And then their culminating was the Windmill Hill. The, the Windmill. And, uh, actually that was the kids' design after multiple, multiple. It was the end of the process. So that's what we do. We also, the children in the three and four year olds rooms, uh, built a, um. They wanted to build a house big enough for them to go into and, uh. So with what's up, what shape do you want it? Because we were talking about shapes. They wanted a triangle house. I already said that's what we used to call a A-frame, but that didn't. Um, anyway, uh, but they built that and it's, it's pink. Uh, uh, so I mean, these are the type of things they do. They are part of the discussion. They carry it on. They make the decisions. We are the only there. We do not say, this is how you build a house. We ask questions. How do you think you would make build a house? What we end up with are kids who can stand in front of a group and deliver a presentation. It was amazing. We had a, a parent open house, uh, uh, October, I'm not sorry, last March. Where the children, uh, brought, you know, the parents brought potluck, dinner, everything. The three and four year olds and stood up and talked about their dinosaur that they had built. And every one of those three and four year olds stood up and added something to this group of fifty, sixty parents in the building. So the, the, our children have a lot of confidence and I see it. Now I'm seeing that they're going out into public school, coming back to us and we're seeing there's a difference. And the children that, uh, you can say it's biased. Yes, I will buy into that, but, uh, we're saying it. Um, what, um, I don't heard my things where we went, um. Some of the problems that we are now experiencing because of COVID. Is not, uh, we number one, we are, we operate on a two hundred and forty work days. Two hundred and sixty. The public schools, as you all know, are a hundred and eighty. That it isn't even a hundred and eighty because they build in the, um, teacher in service there. So our teachers are learning, earning less. Than what teachers in the public schools. Would you say, well, that's childcare, Nancy. Our son was just telling me a good friend of yours had. Who's from France, who's working in Arkansas. She has a masters and she's earning twelve dollars. This is childcare. It's a, it is appalling what we pay. We tend to pay at least eighteen and it is a struggle to pay them. But they have no benefits. They have no bonuses. What we try to do based on our investment banker, he told us. We do can't afford the other things, but do an end of a year, um. Based on their performance, they get us if whatever money we have extra, we divide it up and give it to them. So that's how we, we also do, uh, do give a gas. Uh, mileage above thirty because as you all know, and you're all gonna, you know, you're. There's no housing in Castine. So where are you gonna put somebody that earns fifteen, sixteen dollars an, uh, an hour? Where are you gonna put them? They can find housing outside of the community, but then they run into gas expenses. So we, we are covered. Um, and with that, um. Let me see, um. Low salaries are, it, it, that's in all of childcare area. That's, it's, it's a big problem. Uh, and I mentioned that also housing is a problem. Outcomes. Uh. What has happened before COVID? I've been in this field for almost sixty years. No one really cared about early childhood education until COVID. After COVID hit, everybody all of a sudden said, oh, my gosh, what do we do with the little ones? And all of a sudden, everybody got in. And then as a result. It has had an impact. The elementary school in, in here in town hasn't expanded to full day for their four year olds. That meant we lost close to what seventy percent of our income. Because the children were now going to public school.
Age group.
In that particular, in that age group. So at that, so that was one, that is one problem that happened. The other problem that happened is the. Adams School, as all public schools are controlled by the Department of Education. Were controlled by the Department of Health and Human Services. Health and Human Services, it considers school age five and above. That point, once the decision was made, there was no place for those four year olds to go at two o'clock in the afternoon. I couldn't put them in the after school program. They did not meet the state regulations for the Department of Health and Human Services. I sent out, a year ago, I sent out letters to select people, to the board, to the governor, to everyone. Nothing. I can also tell you, the head of the Department of Ed wrote back to me and she said. The school district was to work with, with setting up the, after the, the four year old program. They were to work with existing child cares in the community. That never happened, even though I did invite. The personnel to come to the school, tour the school and made offers. You can have the, you can have the, uh, the after school room during the day for the, for your four year olds. Anyway, that's one problem. The other problem is, so that we're still, we're still struggling with that. I can tell you, I have one parent who desperately needed care. They are paying full ride for their children. To be in that room from two o'clock on because I can't, I have, I have to pay the teacher. And so that, that particular family is willing to do that. So that, those are some of the problems. The other is also the library's house. Is now offering, uh, preschool programs. And so the children are going to that instead of the after school program because it's free. Ours, you have to pay. Uh, so, because again, I have to have a teacher in that room and. Um, so that's, that's another problem. Um, the other problem is what's happening in the library is not, the library does not have. Uh, locus perento. So that means they have no, they absolutely do not have any control over those children. I mean, they might say they do in say, you know. But if the child wants to walk out and screams and yells, they have to walk out. Uh, it. Uh, so that, that, that to me is a concern, but that's. Particularly when they're taking our children away from us for that. Um. Trying to review this again, um. Future. We can keep the doors open. We're doing fine. But if we want to pay our teachers what they should be paid. We need to think about other possibilities and how this can actually work. I, my vision for this before COVID. And where employment is so low, you can't get. Anybody to come in and do this type of work because they can earn as much money to go to McDonald's. And why come in and do this and not when you can do, you, we do get dedicated people, but also we've gotten a lot of not so dedicated. I know there was one lady we interviewed and the whole time she slurping a blue drink from, um, uh, from Dunkin'. Dunkin' Donuts and, uh, it was a little disturbing. But it's. These teachers should have, based on their education and based on their experience and based on their quality. They should receive these little early, for up to five years of age. I can tell you all the friendship research, everything is there. This is the most important time. This is where we should pour our, put our money, not in later on into, you know, high school and college. This is where it is. There is a difference. I'll just digress for a second. We had a little fella came in at three and a half. He was not potty trained. And he did not have any language skills at all. It was for us and, uh. Lot of syllabus. And we worked with them from June to, um, April. He was in the programming room. But I'm sitting outside watching them play in the play yard and this child sat down to next to me and said. It's a beautiful day, Miss Nancy. That's, this is why I do it. You, I mean, it just makes you feel so, here was a child who was not, and when he said he was potty trained. He was potty trained. He had language skills, really good. Because one of my phrases is that's not appropriate behavior. So he's going around the room telling children that's not appropriate behavior. Those are what you, those are what you keep, that's what keeps all of these teachers who are earning sixteen, seventeen, eighteen dollars an hour. It keep, that's what keeps them going and out of McDonald's. Uh, so that would be definitely something we would wanna think about, um. Again, our teachers were two hundred and forty. They work hard. Part of the problem also is to make this work. The two people at the end of this table have been unpaid volunteer workers for the last four years. That's how it's, that's how, or I cover lunches. I cover when anybody is sick. Adams, you know, all, they have, substitutes are hard to find. So I come in and cover those. More than qualified, I can do it. But somewhere along the line. And W G has been maintenance for them. He most long, he, the two of us are up there at six o'clock on snow days, showing the snow. That's a problem. If we're gonna talk about sustainability, we've got to figure out how to do that. Because every entrance on that building has to be shut or again, I'm in violation of code. Because you have to be able to educate, ex- if every, anybody from any of those doors. So the, those are some of the, the, the big problems that going forward. I will say, I already, we're waiting for the state inspector to come, I've talked to Whitney. Whitney is going to come on as we're going to be co-directors. That way, if. We vanish tomorrow. She will be the director. There will be a continuous stream. We do not have to shut, shut this, uh, this down again. So we're waiting, the same inspector that I talked about it last spring. And we both agreed, wanted to give Whitney a little more time in the position to make sure this was a good decision. And, uh, so we're, she's gonna be here within the next week to two weeks. It's, it's that time. The fire, once the fire inspector comes in, you know that right behind it is coming the state childcare center. So at that point, that's, um, what I've done to move forward. On the end, the next is the recommendations, uh. And attached to your packet is a proposed budget. Obviously, as I think down at the bottom of it, you will see we are some sixty thou- with this increase to salaries. And also of course, there's, we, we're, one of the increases at all to utilities. There's not a thing I can do about that. I can keep offering people low salaries, but utility is not a thing I can do. They all have got, uh, you all need in your own personal finances. It's a thing for us. You, we just got the notice about the water. It's, it's gonna go up. I have to fill that in for next year's budget. So those things are, the other is we have to figure out some way to cover him. And we, I, he will not be shown. I will be shown. So we've gotta, that we have to get figured out. And, um, yeah. And maintenance. So anyway, those are, those are the bo- bottom line of what it is, how we proceed. If we want quality. Then we gotta think about different. If you don't want quality. We'll just keep, don't move it ahead, what, long?
Some questions?
Yeah, looking, looking ahead, you guys have done a great job and, you know. Been working, you know, been involved with Otter House before it became.
Right.
Round school and all of that. You guys have done absolutely tremendous and, and great for the community and the children. Looking ahead though, you're a five O one C three right now. Do you structurally, not so much curriculum or the day, but structurally. Do you foresee that? Is that what you wanna see going forward? Would you wanna see the round school? Ideally, like become part of Adams School or become part of the town or something like that? Like, what do you think? Or what would you like to see going forward? And this is not making promises or anything.
Discussions you should have.
You know, right, or, you know.
I would not, excuse me, based on the reception I got when I offered it. I offered it to the present administration at that school.
At what school?
At Abs.
Oh.
I was not given any satisfaction at all. And I, when he, he went ahead and did it. I can also tell.
But can you, I don't think I'd follow you.
I, I invited the principal up to look at the building, go through it. I showed him the after school room and said it's free until two o'clock in the afternoon when your kids are here anyway.
Yeah.
And he said, well, I'll think about it. He went back and, but two days later, he announced that they were doing it and they were doing it at, at, at.
Doing it, meaning the. Right, okay.
So, the other thing is, what we are doing for four and five year olds, or, no, let's go, let's go infant toddler, four and five years. We don't do worksheets.
What do you mean, like?
Work, you know what worksheet is? A worksheet is.
Oh, like for their curriculum?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We don't do worksheets.
Right.
That's, so if you turn it over to the public school, the U will be having. This, I know this from national reporting, reading, you're gonna have three year olds doing worksheets. That's what they don't do and it's easy. So I would not be, if you're asking me, my perception is, and I can tell you, the board would not be in favor. Of it being turned over to Adams School. Now, can we talk about another? Yeah, the, the model that we, the regio media approach, we know that Castine runs it. It isn't their public school system that runs. In fact, they have, you know, in multiple publics areas. But the point is the town does run it. But we would have to make sure everybody knows that it's not the traditional. Programming that you see in public schools today. It isn't healthy for children. And that you read any of the reports coming out from the National Association for the Education of Young Children. It is harmful to children. It's, it, what you're doing is making kids do younger and younger things. I had a parent said to me, my children's five year, child is five years old. They can't read. There's something wrong with them. Said he's not supposed to read. He won't be reading until he's six or seven. That's the national norm. That's when children read. That's by the law or program that people pay extra money to go to because they don't teach reading until you start to get your second team. And the research is there, but we're not doing that read. We're not following it. We're doing worksheets because it's easy. You know, run them off. I mean, did you see I just did? This is the old. Going back to my days in public, yeah. Um, yeah, so that's, that would be my, since I would not be in favor of returning unless I. Saw. If I had a different assurance from. That it's workable, not saying, but my gosh, there would have to be some changes.
Um. It seems, and I don't, I don't know this. For Thor. But that I guess I'm moving toward that, toward like in the four year olds. Now they're thinking about putting three year olds in homeschool.
Yep.
That, that's seems to be what they're looking at. Is there a way? That you foresee that we can elaborate? If you. With what they are looking, I mean, is it possible? Because I totally believe in a way that you teach. I.
Thank you.
I found, I, I, I was a teacher, taught special ed, taught first grade, totally understand what you're doing, totally believing what you do. But is there a way for, for us forward to combine or to. To use their curriculum and, and change it over to the way that you teach?
They spoke, it isn't one of the other. They can't exist. We can do. For instance, instead of giving them, I'm going to go, instead of giving them a worksheet and say color in the triangle. You ask the child to draw a triangle. I mean, it is just simple little adjustments that have to be made. And I will say, if you look at the second page of the, uh, report I wrote. Importantly, the community should work together, not independently. And that's what we have going on now. Uh, to provide a quality of life for young children and their families. The key co- cornerstones for a thriving society. Which is right up there. It's where I, and competition does not enhance collaboration. Common goals must prevail. It isn't, it shouldn't be competitive. And I, again, I, and that was actually, again, going back to the Secretary of Ed for, uh, the city made. When it came out, you're gonna do this four year old program, work with the area's childcare. It did not happen. Didn't happen. And I know you all don't have any control over that public school, but I'm just telling you, that's, uh, that's the perspective. That's, uh, that's the perspective.
So. So what would, what would be your next step? What do you think should be the next step?
I think that there should be a meeting. And I like this superintendent Derek, because his mother, his mother was a childcare.
Not you.
Not Derek.
I know.
He, uh, his, his mother was a childcare worker. I have, I've discussed with him, he gets it. I think we should have a discussion with superintendent, the principal. Uh, the early childhood teacher. And my staff and I think. The select people, selectmen should be selected. People should be there.
We messed, we, we just messed up the whole thing.
Yeah.
We did not.
Absolutely did not.
No, no, it was, it was, it was long. Long needed. So it, it's a case of, it isn't this, here it is. Everybody should sit down and, and the library should sit down too. Because if you're offering. After school programs for. Children. And you don't have. You don't have a sign in sheet and you don't have a sign sheet. And you don't have a parent picking them up. And you, within twenty miles of here, it's over sex, it's sixty. Registered sex offenders. I. We're sitting on a, to me, you can say I'm hyper, but we're sitting on a. Fire. But. I think it's just a case, everybody has to sit down and start talking. And it, right now, it's. Couldn't even, it wasn't until Derek, the superintendent. I couldn't even get them to put me on the list for snow days. So I, because we follow the Adam's school closure. So I'm up at. Four thirty in the morning, watching the news to see. I asked if we could be put on the same list that goes out to all the parents, that there's, no, that's not totally impossible. I was told that by two people at the school. At which point, when Derek, the new superintendent came in. I, first thing I said, sat down, first on our list, can you, he goes, yeah. I'll have it done by the time this meeting is over. And he did.
Well, I don't think that that's, um. Impossible, nor do I think that it's, um, it's something. I, I think it's something that should happen, this meeting. So I think we should, we should.
Well, I already, I mean, that's, I've gotten that because it was the superintendent.
But, but this meeting between everybody, I, I think that makes a lot of sense. I think it's a, it's a good opportunity for everybody to sit down at the table and. Talk about what we can look like collaborating going forward.
Yes, I think it's important and absolutely.
So, um. Why don't you let us talk about it for a while and figure out some, some potential dates? Um, we can maybe ask you about. Jordan, the items or specific kinds of comments, whatever, but conversation.
I just got one quick. On, on the budget, the proposed budget, the, uh, like when you have, do you have the salaries include these, um. Increases you mentioned in the end?
Yeah.
At the bottom of it?
Yeah, that, that was the six, the sixty thousand.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, I want to make sure.
Uh, and that, that will not be, I have, I have to submit to the town at the end of this fiscal year. Which is end of December. That will not be the actual budget because I'm, I can't give them those erasings. I'm saying if we did what they should. That's what the budget would.
In the way, the way I calculated this salary, the new salary. I took the starting salary from the state of Maine for a first time teacher, you know, starting salary. And the state of Maine is forty one thousand one hundred and sixty three dollars per year. But that's a nine month salary. So I took the two hundred and forty days of C C L P, people work. And, uh, compared that to the one eighty five, the arithmetic, it comes out fifty three thousand four hundred and one dollars for the. Salary of a childcare worker. Which is someone instructing learning and these little kids learn so quickly. I enjoy teaching these preschoolers more than I did at the university because they pick up so quickly. And their creative thinking, they solve problems. Three and four year olds often answer a question, a puzzle. That the after school kids can't. So their creativity is just lost. Anyway, this fifty three thousand four hundred and one dollars a year is just a starting salary. That puts them on a par with a public school teacher. But it's way more the childcare workers are being paid. And if they're a degree, they should get compensated for their training in college.
I disagree. Um, thank you both.
Yes, thanks.
And we appreciate all that you've done.
Well, we, thank you for that. But it's, it's for the, it's a longer day.
That's it.
No doubt about that.
And I was so rewarded when our parents said, uh, the end of the week. Well, did so, so like you, it used to fit on you? I said, no. Because this was a person who was a. And it fits, didn't fit in the public school. And so he came to us for some summer program. Lo and behold, he just. He wouldn't speak to anyone. He wouldn't speak to anyone about his parents. So he was so inhibited by his exposure in the public school system. He would, would only talk to his parents. No one else. And by the end of the first week with us. He was talking to us, he was talking to the other kids, his behavior was straightening out. And so that was so rewarding because. What D H H S works on is the whole person. It's not content based. You're not trying to teach reading. Old person, you have to function within society. If you're educated, you can't function.
That's. They do.
Okay.
Yeah.
We will be in touch.
Yeah, I want to come up and visit guys.
Please do.
Like the, uh.
Please do, I could help. Uh, anytime, just let us.
Okay, sure.
Just knock a, we, we have a low key thing we do is a walkie talkie at the door.
Okay.
At work. No, each teacher has a walkie talkie. So when it's, we know who's coming to the door.
That's, that's right. That's why.
Thank you. I'll say I'm the other Derek.
Yeah, do. Well, he's, he's, he's the one. He's, he's over in, uh, Blue Hill.
Good, right.
Very thankful. Questions?
We will, we will.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next part of my agenda, the same conversations, but I do not see Charlotte Blake here. And I do not see her on.
Nope.
Okay, so we will move along, I guess, to Community Resilience Bring Up Proposal. Alan is here.
I am here. Thank you very much. I appreciate you adding me to your agenda for this work session. Uh, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Alan, A L L E N K R A T Z. And I'm the co-coordinator of Blue Hill Peninsula Tomorrow. I know that both Roberta and Derek, uh, know what Blue Hill Peninsula Tomorrow is. Because they've participated in meetings. Uh, for those of you who don't know, Blue Hill Peninsula Tomorrow is a monthly forum. We've, um, a forum of elected and appointed officials from the nine towns on the Blue Hill Peninsula. And since two thousand twenty one, we've been meeting, we've never met in person. We've always met on Zoom. Um, it's a good. Efficient way of meeting to talk about how we as towns can work interlocally, cooperatively. Building on a lot of other, um, uh, interlocal relationships. And this in particular is an effort to focus on climate change and how we as towns. Can position ourselves to mitigate the effects of climate change, adapt to them. And really find funding to do this. I know Castine has a good history of, of working on things like this. You certainly. Did a yeoman's effort after last winter storm, as have many other towns. Um, all of this increased attention to climate change and the need to do. Resilience planning and adaptation has prompted those of us who are co-coordinating Blue Hill Peninsula Tomorrow to realize that we can do more. If we were to hire a part-time, early in career worker. Who would do a lot of the things that, um. Need to be done between meetings. We have very good meetings. And our work would be much more effective if we had somebody who would take charge of following up. Keeping a to do list, helping towns with their resilience planning. Helping towns look for funding, helping towns take the comprehensive plans that every town has or soon will have. And figuring out which of those recommendations that pertain to climate change. Are good candidates for further work, for further funding, for further collaboration among towns. So we have now, uh, on our peninsula, an opportunity through the Community Resilience Partnership. And I know Castine is a member, as is every town on the peninsula. Through the Community Resilience Partnership, we have an opportunity to apply for funding. That would enable three things. It would enable the hiring of a part-time, early in career. Uh, climate resilience coordinator. It would enable, uh, that person to have the time to work with towns to figure out how to implement. A key portions, climate related portions of their comp plans. And third, it would enable the hiring, uh, through a contract, hiring a social vulnerability expert. Somebody who has skills in helping community organizations, nonprofits, um, governments. Figure out how to really make sure. That the members of our communities who are the first and the worst to be affected by climate change, um, how to engage them in the process. How to really provide improved service delivery to them. Notwithstanding the work, the excellent work that's already been doing. I think most towns that have gone through the vulnerability assessment process know that there are gaps. Um, and now we do have an opportunity to fill those gaps with additional, um. Uh, uh, an additional effort and additional funding. So the request in front of you tonight is to join with the town of Blue Hill. And the town of Surrey, both of them have agreed to be the applicants for no met local match, no local cost. No local share funding from the Community Resilience Partnership. To, uh, for a, uh, uh, twenty more, twenty four month period, excuse me, for a twelve month period. To hire a, uh, an early in career climate resilience coordinator. And to do a social vulnerability assessment in four towns, Castine, Blue Hill, Surrey. And tonight I'm also meeting with the town, with your counterparts, your colleagues in Sedgwick to, uh, continue the discussion with them. So it would be a vulnerability, excuse me, a social vulnerability assessment. In these four towns that would really set the stage for the other five towns on the peninsula to follow through in later years. Uh, based on the example of what we would learn here in Castine, in Blue Hill, in Surrey, and potentially in Sedgwick. So that's my quick, uh, ask and I'll happily field any questions that you have. Derek.
So Alan, I saw, um. I think it was you that gave it to me or it was Roberta. Something with Blue Hill where they had a bunch of socio-economic. Figures and all this other, was that part of something similar to this? I know, I thought it's identifying some vulnerable populations, demographics perhaps.
Yeah, you're exactly right. That, um, information that, um, Roberta gave to you. Really was brought to our attention during the August meeting of our Blue Hill Peninsula Tomorrow, when a sociologist at Bowdoin. Uh, briefed us on the, what's called the Maine Social Vulnerability Index. And this is a survey of every town in the state of Maine. And ranking them, or not ranking them, but characterizing them as having elevated social. Uh, vulnerability in terms of various metrics of population, whether it's literacy, whether it's proximity to. Uh, a flooded area, education, um, economics, uh, language capability and so on and so forth. And, uh, Blue Hill, uh, turns out to have somewhat surprisingly an elevated vulnerability in that category. Castine's is low. Sedgwick and Surrey both, uh, are characterized as having medium social vulnerability. And as Eileen Johnson from Bowdoin pointed out, in every town, however the town officially. Is characterized in a general sense, we all know in all of our towns that there's a subgroup of people who are, as I say. Uh, have those additional challenges of meeting climate change. So. Derek, that's correct. And the main social vuln- vulnerability index would be the starting point, uh, for looking at our four towns. Does that, does that respond to what you had heard?
Yes.
Sure.
Yeah, I did. Hi Alan, I'm Amy Gucho. It's nice to meet you.
Oh, welcome. And congratulations, you were just elected, right?
I was, I was. So I'm coming up to speed over the last two weeks, trying to come up to speed on, on a lot of these conversations that were underway before I, I took the position. So. Which leads me to my question, because I'm not sure if I've not yet seen the information or missed some maybe prior discussions, but. If you're, if you're asking us to join your efforts with Blue Hill Surrey and then hopefully Sedgwick. Who I think you're talking to, you said later tonight, what are the costs involved? What would you, what do you force? I assume there's a financial component to this that you're asking for. Would ask for towns to chip in towards the hiring of a coordinator and. A social vulnerability assessment study. What, do you know what those costs are and what that would look like?
So actually, I'll give you good news here. Earlier in your career here, there's no cost to the town of Castine. Uh, this is, um, the Community Resilience Partnership was set up two years ago by the Governor's Office of Policy Innovation and the Future. To provide at no cost towns the technical assistance that they need to advance the strategies of Maine Won't Wait. The Four Year Action Climate Action Plan. So this is money that the legislature has appropriated. It comes in, there is no requirement for a local match. As long as a town is, um, working on one of seventy two different strategies from the Maine Climate Action Plan. So the only commitment that would be necessary from the town of Castine would be to provide. Um, uh, you know, as, as, as we would use the state funding to hire the. Co- the coordinators, we would use the state funding to hire the consulting team to do the survey and the assessment. Obviously, it would be helpful to, would be necessary to have local people, uh, in each town. Volunteering time to provide input, to have meetings. Funny, I, I realize there's a cost to that in terms of time, but there's not a financial dollar denominated cost to that, Amy.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Alan. It says your submission deadline is December seventeenth.
Yes.
Um, if we vote on this next Monday at our December second meeting, would that be acceptable to you guys?
Yeah, that would be fine. Um. I'm spending the Thanksgiving weekend, uh, putting, well, enjoying the weekend, but also putting together the final touches on the application. I was. Up at four o'clock this morning. I couldn't sleep, so I started working on it then, doing some more work on it. So I will have more information, um. Uh, to provide to you before then. Uh, it will be somewhat of a. Won't be a perfect application, but I think it will give you the more, more of the details that, that we'll submit to the state by the seventeenth. If that works for you, it certainly works for me.
That would be great for us to see that and, and have more of the detail. Um, and we're only giving up. Our ability to apply for the grant for one year, right? For twenty twenty five.
Uh, I would characterize that slightly differently. You're giving up the ability to apply in this grant round. There will be a grant round in the summer.
Can we see, are we going to apply again?
And, uh, I talked with Ashley Krulik in the governor's office. She's not making any promises and. I think in the current environment, you know, she can't, but. She's hoping that there will be money in the future grant round in July that towns can apply, even if they're currently working on a project. As you know, Maine got sixty nine million dollars from NOAA for Resilient Maine, which is going to be. Funding a lot of what the governor's office is doing for communities. Um, um, we think that money is secure. I'm, I'm, you know, all I know is what I read in the newspaper. So. Maybe that, maybe that's a longer answer than you needed, but.
That is, that's great. Did you have a?
No, I'm, I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you so much for giving it your time and being a better.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thanks for all you do for the town of Castine.
So Derek.
I'm going to hang on and listen if you don't mind. I enjoy hearing what's going on in our various towns.
Oh, no, this is great. So Derek, the, the sheets that you had, um, earlier that we were going through.
Yeah.
About this. Um, can we, can we get that to Amy so that she?
So she has an idea of that, yeah?
Idea what the Community Resilience Partnership is all about.
I think, I think I received a PowerPoint because I, I'm connecting it all together.
That, you helped me get that blue hill one that had a bunch of stuff on it. Right.
So I have that.
I have a list of tasks that I'm trying to update that are just talking Roberta on that I was unclear on. Because I changed it a little bit. So when I update that, I'll send it over to you just so you can have an idea.
So the partnership divides, quick and dirty, it divides climate initiatives.
So there's one about transportation, there's something about transportation and electric vehicles and things like that. And then there's things about vulnerable citizens and how to recreate cooling centers or warming centers or things like that. And so I think there, there are a hundred and seventy-two, I believe, that's a hundred and seventy-two different things we can choose from. And when we first found out about it, we had a committee meeting, a couple, and people came in and said, this one is great, we should go here. And then the select board, or Sean, we decided that for our first grant, we would ask to change out all the lighting and everything.
Oh, right.
That was that, that's what we did. And then we also, money worked over, we got heat pumps and everything. So it's fifty thousand dollars. They typically do two rounds a year. And typically, if you get it in one round, you probably can get it in the second round. So. But with the sixty-nine million dollars from NOAA, we might be able to turn around and do another proposal in June or July and get it. So that's, is that, okay.
And yeah, so I, I can give you the.
That's fine. No, I got.
I can give you the, like, the list of community actions that.
Yeah.
That's the spreadsheet I'm actually working on now, that, and of course, it's an updated one. So once I update it with what we have done, but I'll, I'll send you both, because there's some links in there that describe some of the items, you know, that are in the list. I was not even sure where this whole list came from, so Roberta's like bringing me up to speed a little bit. Because I'm like, geez, did just our group come up with this list? But clearly, it was, it was state. Think we're.
Mango way, yeah. Okay.
Great.
So the thing on agenda is the Elm Tree Ordinance. Derek, you sent.
A little legal thing, just for you guys, just for the future to look at.
No, we'll check it, you know, we're gonna check it for the.
Roberta, Roberta, this is Alan. I'm sorry. I meant to ask one other question, and the word tree just activated my memory. I'm wondering if you have decided who the third person from Castine will be on the Blue Hill Peninsula Community Wildfire Protection Plan Oversight Committee. We're going to be having our first meeting probably on the ninth of December. So I would hope.
Well, oh, Randy, he had to be a part, so, and I wanted.
I think it's Randy and, and it's Derek, but since the town, every town is entitled to three persons, I just, I'm sorry, I'm interrupting what you were going to say, but I just wanted to get that. There's somebody who can join. And I think you were saying that you might appoint somebody from the tree committee? That was a conversation, Roberta, you and I had. Again, it's totally your call, and I just want Castine to be fully represented.
Yeah, I think, I think maybe if we could find somebody from the tree committee.
What time is it at?
So Derek, we're looking at our initial meeting at four thirty on Monday the ninth.
Okay, because I was gonna take part of the day off, so that might.
Oh, okay, but we have a select board meeting.
Oh, we do. No, we don't, that's, that's why I've been pretty proud of it all.
We have a select board meeting on the second. Okay, Alan, we'll talk with the tree committee and we'll.
Get that back to me. Good. Okay. Sorry for the interruption. Thank you.
No worries, no worries.
Is this an extra copy or I'll hold it? It is an extra copy, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll regroup.
Figure that one out. Maybe we'll have to have our work session on different. Yeah, I was looking my way through it. Right? We'll have to have, well, our work session may need to be a different day earlier, because four thirty, that's gonna put us right up against it. And based on what we have on this one, I'm thinking that's gonna be a pretty hefty work session. So we might wanna move that to Tuesday, the tenth, potentially. Well, the reason I'm saying that is because this forest fire grant thing is made up of like five different communities. So if they're already saying probably yes to it, that, it's a heck of a lot harder to change that than it is for us.
I think I'm, I think I'm good for the.
When is it?
Oh, Derek. Tuesday is the plan.
Oh, Derek, you can't do it Tuesday, because that's a four, right? That's right. So it would have to be like Wednesday or Thursday for our work session, is what I'm thinking. And that would be depending on Amy, you, and Dan's schedule. So let's figure that one out on the second.
I'm catching up. So what, are we moving?
Well, well, with this free grant, not tree grant, it's a forest fire urban interface type thing, whatever.
If there's a meeting for.
Right, right. Let's say four thirty is gonna be the date.
Well, we had the conflict date for the ten, but we can't do it on the ten.
No.
That's the night we're doing the planning and zoning board feels training for everybody. From forty-seven. So, could we do it? Amy, this is you and say no. Could we do it earlier on the ninth?
Looking at that other. The nine? Excuse me. On Monday the ninth? You wanna, so you're asking if we can move the select board work session earlier? I could, I could do it at like three at the day. I could go much earlier than that, but.
Okay, Derek.
We're talking the same date as this other meeting, and this other meeting, Alan is online, right?
I'm online.
At four thirty?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, yeah. I'm gonna be here anyways.
No, that's fine. So three P M. Three P M for work session, and work session will be done by four thirty so that Derek can go. Beyond the seven. Okay, thank you, Alan.
You're welcome. The joys of calendars, right? Thank you.
So for this Elm Tree Ordinance, we, we had this situation, Derek. We had a tree cut down, and it seems. Well, Amy, do you want to ask, do you want to say it has, oh, I mean, it seems that we have to pay the bill because the tree was cut down. Permission was given by someone from the Elm Tree Committee to cut down this, this tree.
Right, because I think, as I understand it, it was, it was impeding or at risk for a public right of way.
Exactly. So we need to.
Although it was on someone's private property.
But it seems that, well, forward, we probably need to use some of this information from Maine Municipal and, and perhaps look at our ordinance and how it's written.
Right, and I think that will, that would take time to do, but it would seem at this point that if the Elm Tree Committee made a good faith decision and effort to remove for safety reasons.
Yes.
A tree that was, you know, involved in a public right of right, even if it's on private property, I think, yes. I think we should, we should pay the bill.
So.
I think that would be understanding probably the timing of the decision, so.
So we will have to put that on our agenda Monday. Do we have to vote?
Well, don't get in that. You should, you can't, in this session, so maybe, yeah. Yeah, the thing is that if you, from me briefing you guys, remember, I think our tree ordinance talks about elm trees mostly. We need to change that ordinance, discuss trees in general, shade trees in general. Because originally, we were using those, but we have other shade trees too. And now we're replanting trees other than elms too, so I think it's a natural migration. Although that's for planting, not removing the old ones, but we should work out something real. And it's up to really, I think, the board determine the, or get a report from the tree committee to say whether or not it's a dangerous tree, endangering the life of the people or not. And then, of course, wanting to replace those. So if it is a tree, but on, let's say, private property or something, we'll have to figure out what we do on those matters, you know? It's not like we're gonna cut it down because we, you know, okay, it's, because you can see the thing, it could be a split cost, it could be something else. But it could be worked out that we say, okay, if you're going to plant one of these new shade trees, then we would take care of this dangerous older tree or whatever. This should be a determination.
And so is this something that we that we, somebody, we talk with the Elm Tree Committee and say we need to.
I think, I think we should, I think we should just see what the, the goals are, talk to Dawn and the group, and, and find out, you know, what their thoughts are on it too, and see if we can come to.
So maybe we, we can, we can talk to them about it, and then they can come to our session later in December and bring us some of their ideas. Then we can start working on an ordinance change. We have to take an ordinance change to the town anyway.
Right. Yeah, that's just my natural thought on it. And, and I wanna make sure it's, in a way, doesn't mean every darn tree, you know?
Yeah.
Because the other road's gonna be a, a dangerous tree to the traveling public and, you know, part of the replacement plan. But I wanna make sure that the tree committee shares those same thought. I'm pretty sure that's the idea, but. I don't know what their input, they've been doing this long, that's a lot longer than I.
Right. And so, Jimmy, you wanna reach out to Dawn?
I can reach out. Yep.
Okay, we're not gonna talk about Jamie Castine, it's not my mission.
Right, that was good, baby.
And so the waterfront study, R F P.
Yeah, so we got, as you know, I think I've mentioned, we got four, they all basically were fifty thousand. I think one was forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty or something. The harbor committee, the harbor master, myself, Matt, last one, saying we went over them. Uh, we quickly pared it down from the four, oh, by the way, so I believe there, there were four studies, but it makes up about seven of the thirteen engineers that got our keys that I know of that actually I sent, or they requested. There may have been others that looked at them. But so we quickly brought it down to two, which was Viewshed and G E I. Um, G E I, of course, was, still have, oh, I don't think I brought my, I have a sheet. Oh, no, I did. I stapled it to the back. That's right. So Viewshed was the forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy. Um, and then G E I was fifty thousand, and we basically looked at the what each were offering for services and what we would get out of it. We actually, I think the committee voted four to one to go with G E I in the end. Scott and I concurred also, although we all loved pieces of the Viewshed proposal. In that we liked how they were going to really have some public input. But, and one of the things that I had mentioned was, I thought Viewshed would be the perfect group for, like, an exit, and I think other people shared that idea that when we got into implementation, we wanted to design certain features, and we wanted to build a coalition or a, a public approval, if you will, then Viewshed could be the group. Viewshed's proposal was in collaboration with Oral Palmer. G E I's, they were in with the Musson Group, which had done Stonington and a bunch of uh, others in the area, and I think that also helped it rise to the top a little bit. But we looked at like just the other projects they'd done, and said, geez, we just think that one's the one to go with. So that's the committee, and it's a recommendation, and Scott, the harbor master, and myself's recommendations, G E I for fifty thousand. And I will say that I have had conversations too with G E I, saying that, okay, now you're being recommended. But we might wanna massage a little bit of the, the beginning steps, because we wanna have like a, a group made up, maybe the select board members, and the harbor committee, harbor master, myself, and actually just discuss uh, the beginning part of it. Um, and we kinda wanna put a, a, the bigger public participation part in as close as possible. What we're worried about is the holidays coming up, so we don't think they'll have enough ready to do the public participation. And when I say they won't have enough ready to do like a little PowerPoint where they act, because one of the most important things that I mentioned, I think Xander also mentioned in Scott, was that we wanna make sure that, before they get too deep into the study, that they get some public caring, so to speak, or it's not really caring, but it will be, because it's there to take public comment about the study and what people would like to see come out of it. And of course, some people are gonna mention things coming out of it that is beyond the scope of the study. But I think it would be important for those things to be put into it, so they can be thinking about those things as they do the study. And one of the things I mentioned was, while we can't necessarily integrate all the surrounding properties up and down the waterfront, whatever we design, I think it's important that it it's usable for other properties along our waterfront. Um, that was just my little public input early on, because I think that's important. Um, to, you know, somehow, everything needs to fit in the right way, the other.
Um, when you guys were looking at, so, both of the four proposals. Um, I was drawn in a different direction. I was drawn towards G E I and G Z A.
Yeah.
And, and I spoke with Peter Stewart, because you have the reference on the G Z A proposal. Uh, because G Z A right now is, is working on the M M A water.
Yeah.
And so what I was curious about was, would it be beneficial to have the same engineering firm that's already doing significant work for half of our waterfront, basically? Um, if there'd be opportunities for integration, you know, even though that design is done and permitted and underway. If there is a way for the town to benefit for, for collaboration and integrated approach. Uh, Peter thought it might also, he couldn't, you know, guarantee it, but he thought there might be opportunity for overall for reduced costs if some surveying has already been done for the M M A portion, that might benefit the town of Castine. And so with their knowledge already in M M A, and then also G E I had done some M M A work some years ago. But I was just kinda curious, when, when you guys were looking and you narrowed it to G E I and Viewshed, were there certain things that you didn't like about G Z A, or did you have objections to G Z A?
I think, I'm trying to remember, where part of the G Z A proposal, and I can't remember exactly what it was now, talked about how certain things weren't part of the part of their study, but we did discuss the fact that we wanted to uh, engage M M A early on, because we believe that some of the, some of their plans or their reports needs to be integrated as part of this. But I think also, G Z A was my second one, just so you know, too. But after, I just let G E I rose to the front, and I think we also felt that not necessarily having G Z A is a bad thing. We get a different take from G E I on what is important for us, and it isn't just, okay, this is what M M A is doing, so naturally, this is what we need to do. So it's a different company, different look, it's independent, and it just doesn't slide right in. While we want to make sure that we share ideas and concepts with M M A. Basically, I believe that's the discussion that we had with the harbor.
And I had asked Peter as well when I spoke with him, I said, you know, not, I'm not sure, I'm completely comfortable if we hired the same engineering firm that is doing the work with M M A in terms of if there were any differences of opinion, are we, are we placing them in a tough situation where our waterfront is, is distinct and there are areas for M M A's property, but ultimately it's a fairly blended, you know, right, you know, use of some similar spaces? Would there be risks for conflict of interests where we've got the same engineering design to serve both parties? So wasn't totally comfortable with that, oh, it could be an interesting, you know, project, it could be integrated.
And so this is kind of like, just, like I said, there's a lot of plan, a lot of conceptual ideas with estimated costs or anything else, knowing that it needs to fit in with whatever M M A is doing, and so I think that that's just part of it. But I just think that G E I, literally, you know, there were seven people, not including Scott and I, at the table, and I would say six out of, you know, the seven people around that table all was leaning towards G E I, and G Z A was not the favorite. Some of them was second, but, um.
Yep.
G E I came up as the, the favorite one, and then Viewshed was one of the first recommendations. I thought Viewshed was gonna be the one early on, so, you know, our. You know, or, or at least of the harbor committee recommendation.
Yeah.
Just cause I liked the dynamics of them, of uh, how they were gonna present things and um, but we, we thought that GEI punched more of the, the specs and the RFP. And, and I can't remember, Xander has highlighted, and I looked for it at that meeting also, but on one of their um, provisions of GZA, they said, oh, that won't be part of this finding, there's something like that, so.
Right.
Um, but really, they were thrown out earlier on that we didn't really get into the whole highlighted part that he and I concentrated on, cause everybody else was concentrating on Viewshed and GEI at the same time.
Interesting.
And knowing that GZA, but that was one of these, different viewpoint, different look, supposed to be an independent type of look at ours while integrating the surrounding properties. So definitely, one of the things they said was, we wanna make sure we get MMA involved early on cause we believe, I, I'm gonna say it, that is not sunk in the way they said it was. We believe that MMA should share their plans and on my little notes, I said, okay, what plans is it? I'm supposed to be asking about being shared, cause I don't know.
Well, that, that was actually my next question, whoever goes for wins, excuse me, this proposal. Um, are we planning to provide them with the design for MMA's waterfront? Cause it's out, well, I mean, it's been designed, because it would seem like they, they should have that information because it would impact, I think it would make a difference, like how far out the ship is.
Right.
How far out these boats are gonna be as how they relate to the town dock area and anything they might propose.
And that's the thing.
They have to have access to that information.
And I don't know, that's one of these, I read, I couldn't find out where I read, I thought it was on MMA's website where they had put something out there that said, okay, our actual current dock is part of a phase two plan, but I've never seen any plans phase two. It's everything that happens out beyond the mainland, except for maybe some stabilization around because of sand, of dirt leaking out of the, the this side of the, so what's that, the west side of the, in front of the um, halls. Um, but yeah, but the actual, okay, what are they gonna do where the parking lot is and all that? I don't think anybody's seen a plan yet for that, that's really where, we're concentrating on.
Right, and, and I don't know about that either, some of the meetings I've been in, I think, you know, I've seen the, the initial plans in terms of, you know, how much further out the, the docking needs to be, you know, the whole.
Right, the whole, the T structure, right, right.
Double T.
Right, right, cause like, I mean, it's the old and the new.
Exactly, and there are multiple phases, but I don't know that I've seen or, or heard of designs for phase two with it because I look at it from my position there, say, okay, when are you gonna start disrupting some of the classroom buildings? And, you know, I've been, oh, you know, that's like phase three and we're not. I'm like, okay, that's fine, you know, the building's in there, I, I'm good, I'm good, you know, cause I, I need that information, so. I think, I'm not sure, if, but there is at least right now, the design that they're working on right now so that we can accept the new ship. And I think that information, that design would need to be provided to whichever firm receives this. I think that would be integral to their study, knowing that there's a major budget going on, that it's not gonna look like it currently does.
Right.
And how that might impact the rest of the town water space.
I mean, it could be, you know, how the waves are coming, it could be a lot of, so I don't know if, you know, that may be the, the secret information or, or the info, I'm not saying secret, but they, the, I'm like, what information, nobody can really tell me the information. It was reminding me of that real estate show, give me the leads, I need the leads.
See, there's a design outlet, or Jake, or Sharon, or Peter.
Right.
You gotta get something we can give to an engineering firm for them to at least be aware.
Because we have, uh, you know, money as part of that for us to do something with our dock, the floating part of it, or so that it will all come in later on, you know, so. But this is supposed to be looking at, you know, our solid parking lot dock areas, the boat launch, you know, and the properties in that area, and then making sure it integrates with or can be used by the other places, because we're only as strong as whatever's there. There are different, just so you know, there are different ideas too, when we talk about this, there's some people that believe, okay, like for our, for our docks now. Our docks, when with a perforated um, uh, polymer decking on it now, is made to be smirched, right? Because one of the things that happened was, they got pounded from underneath with all the energy of the ocean waves. Well, now thirty-three percent of that, you know, can go up through, but ideally, if that's underwater, it can't get pounded from, you know, waves coming up and down. So if it's underwater, so there's some that say, well, that's the way to go. Why lift it at all, right?
Hmm.
If that's going to protect the structure there. Of course, if those are underwater, that means the whole parking lot's underwater, so how do you protect some of the surrounding properties if that is what the ultimate plan is? We don't know what the ultimate plan is, but this is what I've learned in the last how many days I've been here, a hundred days or whatever, is there are different theories on what the solution is, you know?
Yeah.
So, but yeah.
Well, I would say, you know, when I reviewed the four proposals, I was actually focusing on GEI or GZA.
Yeah.
Uh, the other two didn't seem to catch my attention from anything like.
Yeah, yeah, I, I felt the same, those were my two top ones initially, and I, and the reason like Viewshed was because I thought they had a great presentation part of it, like, and.
They're average.
Right, and if they're gonna build consensus, then they're gonna be great. And GZA and these guys were the nuts and bolts type of, okay, we're gonna look at this and that, and, but then GEI was the one that I thought was best, and I didn't know how it was gonna go in that room. So it was interesting to see that everybody was seeing similar things that I was seeing, except for they liked Viewshed.
Yeah.
More than I did, but.
Well, I liked Viewshed and I liked GZA, so those were my one and two.
Well, right, so if they have different ideas and thoughts, okay, this solution's gonna be five hundred thousand, this is gonna be a million? Viewshed is like the ones that'll give you the green dots and yellow dots, and they'll have different, they're the ones I think to lead a thing like that to build consensus on the right plan.
I think so.
For sure, I, and that's what I felt a little bit about them was that seemed to be too early on, like to build consensus. We want you to look at this from the engineering world and.
That's fair.
You know, that type of thing.
I think so.
So that's how I viewed Viewshed was, they would be good at capacity buildings.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So the next thing, um, origin that is the PFAS testing, and I think we should, I can't, but we, we can leave the PFAS, I think that we is, we think that it's important to do this testing, to figure out where the people. We would have to ask the town for the minutes, so it would have to go on the main line. So I think this is something, and I think doing it not so much as a tie into the fire station, but as just a public, public safety.
To find it, like, find the.
Yeah, public safety. So I think this is something that we just discuss more during budget season and we see if we can put it into the war. That same term?
Yeah, I would agree, because I think, you know, when the GeoHy, I drew a.
Geological.
Study came back.
Yeah.
Um, you know, you had made a point in that meeting, before I was on the board, you know, that that yes, the PFAS was found and make it, made a distinction to say, let's every, let's everyone remember that fire department, proposed fire department is not yet on that property.
Right.
So I think the two are distinct, and I think now it's, it's a decision for the town for purpose of safety and due diligence, if we wanna move forward and see what more we can learn about the PFAS, because there may be other safety matters that we might need to address at the town, and if there is any hope in finding what the source might be, which could be impossible.
Right.
Fine, or if there's any way to determine like, if there are mitigating efforts that we could make. But I think that, for those reasons, I think it would, would be valuable to explore that, you know, to learn that.
Yeah.
And I think, and I think we s- we should, we add it to the warrant in the town.
Right, cause I think we have some, some financial estimate about what it would, about what it would cost, like, I think.
Um, next is our fiber steward.
Yeah, so you got this, I uh, gave you an updated copy of it, cause the other one was a little old and, and I I was looking at it, I'm like, okay, wait, what is this? And on it, you'll see on the agreement before, it says, well, we're gonna have zero of the multi-factor authentication, zero security, so we're just gonna be like part of the software, I would say that, so what I found out about the know before. So I have two different classes I'm signed up for, for uh, each one of these steps. One for the, the, the um, Ubico um, multi-factor authentication, and I actually had this discussion today. I said, look, I am not gonna put on there the thing, like, every time I turn on my computer, I have to open up that darn authenticator thing that never works for me from Microsoft. The staff is going to like, run me out of the office, but no. She said, well, no, these are actually keys, you plug them into your computer and they open up. As far as I know, should you not have the key, there is a way to get a text or whatever to unlock, it's like, let's say I left it at home, I'm like, oh damn, I need to get in my laptop. So, still learning more, but we'll learn that over the next course of the uh, the couple of weeks. But then, of course, training I thought was gonna be important because the New Hampshire, and then when I left Alex, I mean, we just spent twenty thousand dollars or something like that on new cybersecurity stuff, because one of the towns sent fifty, five hundred thousand dollar check to the school district or whatever, or wired it to them, and it was not the school district. Whoever it was, was really wise, they saw they were having this discussion. They had come to an agreement, okay, yeah, we can send you that money, and whoever the little person was, said, oh, hey, send us the money to da, 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 and like, so somebody sent it, the phishing report. So we had put up, you know, the phi- phishing testing just to test people periodically, not that they're gonna get in trouble, but to educate them. I'm not sure if this is all, this is gonna be, but it is similar. So the state had a bunch of money from the feds um, for uh, to participate in this. Um, and this is the first year, we may not get the multi-factor authentication on this round, but we may get them, it depends on uh, how many are available, but we will have cybersecurity awareness training as a possibility. Um, the other thing I said, look, we don't have a big IT department, so if you think I have a bunch of time to sit down and do all this stuff, you know, it's gonna take too long. And they said, no, that's part of the training is from smaller towns, that's what we did on these surveys. We did a survey before I was here, nobody remembers doing it, but somebody did fill it out back in November or August last year. I just did one a few weeks ago, and that was my concern, was manpower to make this happen. Because while it's important, if you don't have the manpower to make sure the training's done, then it's just a waste of time. We just hope that we're not gonna be vulnerable. But I think we don't have a huge network of hundreds of people or a smaller, um, you know, uh, organization. Alan said we have over seventy accounts, so that just tells you an idea. We're only as strong as one or two of them, so this seems a little more relaxed. Um, but you'll see that um, the uh, they talk about the upcoming webinars and um, they have the different resources. Uh, and the overview one, I think it's on December fourth, Ubico is coming up after that, and they don't have the know before. They give us a value set of uh, six hundred and ninety-four dollars really for this grant, but I think it's much more than really that six hundred and ninety-four because of the uh, the training that the uh, state is providing with it. So, basically with this, when we get into our actual meeting, then we'd want to agree that we will sign the local agreement and authorize me to sign it for the board. Um, and of course, uh, that was my initial concern, why I had that meeting today online. Um, was, cause I wanna make sure what we were getting into, you know? Cause if this all falls apart, we might go, yeah, now you're beyond our, you know, capacity to be able to implement this.
So does security awareness training licenses?
Yeah.
Does that mean?
Yeah.
That Sue and Karen have to take these classes?
Everybody will have to take, every, no, just, there's five of them, so basically we have me, Sue.
Oh, and Sean.
And Sean, right, so they, they, and then the, the reason that there's six authentication keys and five is because I also included the counter computer, which I think is a separate computer, at least I did when I filled this out, right? Um, but yeah, so the, and that will mean that they'll be able to take those courses that they will assign for us to do. And um, and I, I don't know enough about that part of it, because we need to have the webinar. That was the thing I complained about to them, is like, we just all of a sudden sent out these agreements, but didn't do a very good job explaining any of this to anybody. In fact, we thought it was fake, I sent out a thing to my manager's lister and saying, hey, is this legit? When Sean initially sent, he said, I'm not sure if this is legit or not, and I'm like, yeah, let me look. So I found the state website, but then I still didn't test it. I sent out a thing, said, anybody else get offered a grant for this or that? And they're like, yeah, but we don't know much about it, I'm like, oh. I thought it was just because I hadn't been in Maine for the last, you know, six years, but now I understand that they just didn't do a great job of publishing this program. And, and really, I think the overview webinar would have been nice to have that even before this step. This is due um, by the end of the week, so I wanted to um, you know, get us started. And I, I was more comfortable once I found out that this wasn't gonna be hundreds of hours, which was what we were dealing with. And of course, now you have a little more cybersecurity with the baseline testing. You'll see testing to assess fish prone percentage of users through a simulated phishing attack. That's gonna happen while they're reading the email at work, so some of this stuff is just gonna be natural stuff to test out, or, oh, you know, if somebody fell for that, and then you know, all right, we need to do better training. And then, you know, the content. I'm not sure how it's all working yet, but I, it's good stuff to see, because like I said, we spent thousands of dollars in Allenstown doing the same thing. And um, it's better to be safe and sorry because they are going after smaller organizations all the time because they find, meaning they're usually the more vulnerable ones, so.
All right. Um, so do we need to have a solar update?
Uh, well, I think the solar update, you need to read the solar report on like, what their findings are, there's like the two suggestions. They, the next step is gonna cost us money, that we don't have that money. And um, so I forget what it is, eighteen thousand or something like that off the top of my head. And they would write up the RFP and start designing the program or whatever, it's out there. I wouldn't mind pulling in, it's gonna reach out, we have a solar company that I think I mentioned, the Roberto, that did a project. And Allen sent, before I got there, on, put solar on our fire station roof. Um, and of course, how it's funded, he's, he did, I believe, uh, there's a big solar field going in, or now it's completely behind Lowe's and Brewer. He's involved in that, so I thought it'd be interesting to get perspective from one of the solar companies to say, yeah, hey, yeah, this was a good time to do it, because one of the things, they weren't restricted, now they're restricted to that one megawatt. And I still have questions of why, if we're restricted to one megawatt, why we couldn't have another megawatt with a different company on our landfill? Cause it's only gonna take half the landfill, and I asked that question Dana at that meeting, but she said, no, I don't think we can do that, but I, I wanna know why.
Okay.
Because if I can do a one megawatt here, is something says you can only do one megawatt on your land? Or is it, okay, each field with all of the equipment needs to be separated, so you got one, uh, I don't know what they call them, capacitator, AC to DC switches or whatever here. All of a sudden you have another one here. I am not sure, or was that a ladies thing where they don't want them all over the place, cause they're too big? But I'm thinking, we have a landfill, okay, it's just sitting there. So, I don't know, but it, so it could be two different companies, you know?
It sounds to me like you wanna do a little bit more research.
I do.
I would, I still need to read the solar report.
And I, which I have. Let's take, let's, 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 let's table it for, and come back.
I mean, but I, but that's where we are, we're at that next step, but I I wanna get somebody else's take on it too.
Let's take some time, let's take a little time to do some research, thank you.
I mean, it's not, like I said, um, if we're gonna buy all of our power through, it's ten to fifteen percent discount. One of the things like I was telling you about, there's no reason to put solar on the roof here if that's the same deal, unless we're gonna try to own it ourselves, but that means we have the cost of maintaining it at the same time.
Okay.
All right?
No, I'm good, yeah, yeah, you need time to actually read these things. We've been, we've been on it for weeks.
All right, ready to go. All right, ready to go. Okay, FEMA Fort Madison, do you wanna talk about that or?
Well. Well, I, well, the thing is, they sent me an estimate on how to fix it or whatever, and. And while Fort Madison, they haven't yet, Fort Madison doesn't have a road up above it, so I made the argument that this road that. Is going to be affected and crashing the oceans someday. So they sent back the using that we could use some GeoGrid and uh, some. And I said, well, Jesus, is that gonna hold? You understand that's not a gentle slope like this, it's almost up and down. And I said, whatever it is needs to be, it can't be your standard size work rate, it needs to be something bigger. I said, cuz it needs to be. Standing up to the smaller storms, cuz if you look at the erosion that's happened there, it's at the lower levels. And it's slowly created weakness up above over the years, this is what I'm speaking of. Right, and so, you know, I talked about what they use in a lot of places, like in breakwaters or anything else, these. I don't know what they, they're like pods, they look like giant jets, right, and they're, they're thrown down there, I don't know how much they are, I don't know anything. I thought maybe FEMA would, but I said, look. It's these smaller storms at lower tides that are actually pounding at this, is what you're suggesting actually going to. Solve the issue, or are we just putting stuff back there that's slowly gonna erode anyways? You need to put something there to cut that wave action at those lower levels, and that's what these things are made to, because the water hits them. It kind of breaks apart, and then it gets. Bounces in there like a baby, let's say, by the time it hits the bank, it's dissipating a little, it's what they use. But it very well could be very expensive, I have no idea, so I asked them. Uh, yeah, how much, and they said, oh, we don't know. Uh, ask your engineers, well, we don't have an engineer, so that's, so we may need to hire an engineer to look at this problem. Or we could just take FEMA's money, but there's like six of these different spots. I don't wanna fix it if it's not gonna. Really matter in the long run, cuz we have a road up above it, and whatever money that we put in, our twenty-five percent. I'd like to think is going to be part of a permit solution rather than just a Band-Aid that. We're gonna have to spend that money again, so that's where I am on that. Um, when we hired this company, I asked if, you know, they could come down and take a look at that and say. Yeah, we could probably figure out what to do for X amount of dollars, or to take a look at, you know, what FEMA's suggesting, what I'm suggesting. As a, I don't know. Not often they do favors, but that just tell me, okay, how much would it be to to do this the right way?
And we're dealing with a rope, this is very.
Right, so that's why I'm thinking is, I don't want to do a little Band-Aid fix, and look at what they did, it didn't even last one storm, you know, I wanna make sure. Because it's really the power of the waves that is creating that erosion, and it's only as good as the, you know, that solution, but. I'll have to see, cuz I heard that. And I haven't been able to see it yet, that Wilson pointed some s- heavy slope stabilization down there too. So I'd like to actually figure out what was done there to to make sure. I don't, here, I'm operating above my pay grade, I guess, when we discuss this stuff. Cuz I'm trying to learn at the same time and get as much free information as we can. But it, but Mikey is. Doing it right first.
That's good for me.
Yeah.
Okay.
So now it's.
Legislative Ball Update, Derek has sent an email later with both recent. Of legislation that there, so the legislative committee is during the municipal occasion. There are seven. Um, select board members to nominate. Assessors from all over the state that come together, and they created, I believe, about nine pieces of legislation. That Maine Municipal is willing to present to the legislature this year on behalf of the municipalities. Couple of them in here that. Or not, um, but I'm gonna just give you. Okay, and and feel free to look them over, and we don't have to do anything about it. If there is something that's really important to us, then my policy and ethics, we wanna come and testify, but we don't, you know. If I'm gonna testify, but um, anyway, I just wanted. Everybody on the select board to know what Maine Municipal is doing, cuz it's part of my role is I have to get this to all the select boards.
So do we know when they're presenting, I mentioned the session back in in January or?
They're back in January, date of closure, what closure, 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 where, closure, I don't know what they call it. And um, I'm not, um, and they moved it up this year, I believe it is. Something crazy like December sixth.
First, you mean for them to submit their bills?
Yeah, two years ago it was December thirty-first, last year I think it was December fifteen, and this year it's like December sixth. So.
How many bills do they, oh, they probably don't even know yet.
No, they don't even know yet, but it's.
So we think they'll be presenting these on December sixth?
They will be presenting these to the legisl.
They already have their sponsors set up, though.
They're setting up their sponsors right.
Okay.
They're, they're getting all their sponsors set right now, so they will have these in, but, uh, yeah, that's pretty, pretty well. Uh, and the other thing that I'll just throw out, and I did send an email today, including the scope of work for everybody to look at. But we did, you know, we did get the DECD, DECD, the Department of. What is it, Economy and Community?
Economic Community Development.
Thank you, I always get that wrong, we did get the grant for the housing, uh, for for a housing study. So, um, I've sent the scope of work today to everybody, so that you can look over it. Um, we have our first meeting with DECD on next Monday at two thirty.
At five thirty.
So excited, it took a while for them to get to us, but most, they let us know that we. That we got the grant, and then it's taken like three months to. Get a meeting to discuss the grant, so, anyway, all right.
When the meeting?
On Monday at two thirty, if you'd like a Zoom link, I can send.
Wasn't, can I ask, wasn't that's like. It wasn't, it was through DECD, but it was congressionally directed money, was it earmarked like that, is that correct, or was it not?
I am not sure.
Because for some reason, I thought somebody told me this wasn't the classic CDBG.
Oh, maybe that was.
Grant, and it actually was congressionally directed spending, which would make sense why you weren't hearing it. Things early on, because it hadn't have gone through the beginning of the federal fiscal year, cuz I'm still waiting. I don't know if it's the Department of Interior, I'm waiting for uh, Mrs. Woodcock and Susan Collins Office to answer my question, cuz she said, oh, reach out to. And she gave me a name, I'm like, I don't know who that is to reach out. I just got the thing working today, as you remember, before the meeting, maybe that will have both of our grants on there. But I think it's a C Street, but the actual other money, I believe, is. Blown a blank now, we have the, we have the C Street, then we have the DOT funds, I think were the other funds, those two, right. Do we have another one besides that one?
I think it's just this, and I'm not.
So I think it's the DOT one, I'm still trying to find out, which I think they said Department of the Interior.
Yeah.
So that's what I'm still waiting to hear from them, it could be in that portal.
It could be.
That I just literally got in for the first.
And we were lucky that we got those in when we got those, because they haven't, they haven't proved any congressional directed spending. For this year.
Yeah.
Nobody's gotten anything.
So.
Okay. Thank you.
And usually, just so you know, congressional directed spending, I'll, I'll tell you the agency's take on this, is that. Cuz I get into this once with the DOT, just with our project we did down Naples, when we did the Causeway. Because I said, no, you need to spend some money on the Causeway, if you don't do this, then I'm just gonna go for congressionally directed spending. And they said, Derek, please don't do that, and I said, well, no, we need to spend X amount, and they said, well, when you do that. That already comes out of the allocations that come to the state anyway, so in a lot of cases. Like, let's say they're spent sending twenty-five million, not in all cases, cuz sometimes it's added on to a different bill. I don't know how we get ours from this or whatever, but they'll pull it out of the money that was gonna go to the state and direct it towards the town, rather than. The competitive bidding the other way, so that's what happened with the Causeway Project Naples. We ended up getting rid of a opening turning bridge. And actually saved them like eight million dollars from having to do it, and I said, yeah. We need to have like half of that eight million to fix the Causeway there. And so we said, all right, if we can do this. Then you'll agree to that, this, yeah, don't go after congressionally directed spending, cuz we're gonna fight you. And I said, well, it's either one or the other, so we ended up compromising, just so you know, but that's always what. The bureaucrats and the guests are sometimes don't like that, but no, it's fine on us, because like for CDBG type stuff. Less it's targeted, you're not gonna get that, cuz you're, the low moderate income levels have a problem with that, so sometimes it's the only.
Yeah.
Chance you have.
Mm-hmm.
But for small communities, sometimes you have to get that.
Good, and it's peninsula wide and.
And I think it's, yeah. Yeah, no, I agree.
Did you have anything?
Did you not?
Okay, so we will adjourn this work section.
Yeah. I couldn't see the floor, it's too dark back there without my glasses on, five forty-one.
I will call this meeting of casting select board to order.
All right.
Um, and.
Are we managing minutes for this?
Um.
What you're doing, okay.
I was gonna say, we're reporting Sue and Marsha, you go, you go quickly, we already have the heavy lifting of all these items.
Tell me what she is, so, the first thing on, the first item on our agenda is to award the waterfront study RFP. Um. So.
And allow me to sign any needed contacts and paperwork related to it.
Okay, so. I will make a motion. That we award the waterfront study RFP to G E I and allow Derek to sign.
And of course, the amount was fifty thousand, everything.
Give you a second.
No, I just wanna add also, just for G E I, just for the thousands watching at home and around the world on YouTube. The Mustang Group is part of the G E I Consultants Proposals.
Is there any discussion? Or none?
Yes, go ahead, I mean, I guess I would just say for the record that, you know, looking at the four proposals, that G E I and GVA were. My top two choices, um, they both have had prior, one has current experience with MMA, one has prior experience with MMA, and I appreciated both. Their experience of, for work they've done in Castine. Uh, in the areas, adjacent areas that we're looking to have this study done, G E I has also done it at Bucksport and Rockland, and so I think. In my mind, that carries some value, that they are familiar with our community, um, and, um. And I like their prior, um, or existing relationship with MMA, because I think that's an important, um. Party to a waterfront study, uh, for the town. As of the, the integration of all of our waterfront usage and properties. So I'm comfortable with, um, with G E I, I think I'm comfortable with both of them, um, with the recommendations for G E I, I don't have any objections.
And I, and I thought that, um, G E I was on my top two list, um, also. What was it called? I always get it wrong.
Uh, GZA?
No.
Oh, Viewshed.
But Viewshed, but I agree that later on. Viewshed might be a much better choice for later on, giving some community. So, okay, um.
If I can also, Derek, we understand that. That your recommendation and the harbor committee's recommendation is for G E I. Harbor Master, they've also reviewed the same proposals.
Yep, yeah, yep.
Thanks, all right, uh, I'll. And then, second thing, which is the cybersecurity grant.
I can make a motion, I'm being, I think I'm making a motion that we accept the cybersecurity that's gonna go to Castine and just. The amount of. Six hundred ninety-four dollars and seventy-two cents, if I'm not mistaken. Related to hardware software.
Yeah, and allow me to. Sign.
To sign the the document, to accept that.
I'll second. Um, is there any discussion?
I'm comfortable with this, I think it's a good, it's stepping stone towards security, to tell how it can't, can't hurt. So if they're giving us the money, let's, let's.
Yeah, and and the fact that it, you know, they're gonna do a lot of the manpower part of the stuff, so that'll help out the men speak. Make sure it's, that's.
Um, okay, I'll. And is there any other? Well, it's a motion to adjourn, uh, I will be adjourned meeting, it's five forty-six. On second, on favor, I, I, okay.
All done, thank you.
The hold on a second, the motion, Roberta, second. In the world of.